Yes, the way you want to take raw, it has to come from capture and you feed it.
Give me a second here.
Okay.
We got like nine nice jars with sourdough.
Beer, sourdough.
We've got the whole thing. My wife wants to live in the middle of it and do all that stuff. And I remind her.
Have her gone talking like live on a little farm? Don't do it.
And she wants to get a dog.
Sixty years.
And I said, when we perfect the kids, we want to get a dog. We're not doing that. No, we are not.
So thanks, everybody. I'm going to call to order our community development and renewal agency work session for today. June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. My name is Mike Wickers. As the mayor of Conwood Heights, I serve as the chair for the Community Development and Renewal Agency. Here on referred as the C D R A with members of the city council serving as members of the board. Our first item of business today is a hillside update and funding discussion. So we're going to have our community and economic development director, Mike Johnson, start off with the, and then we'll get dive into a deeper discussion. So, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to quickly go over the council memo that we sent out and then the supplementary info that we sent out yesterday and kind of give you a an update on where the process is at. And then we're at kind of this pivotal point where some, some council feedback will be really key. Some financial tools that will help us achieve the town center vision. So we want to kind of open the discussion with that. But just to bring you up to speed, we have been over the past, I guess, couple of months, really since some late February. Having meetings with the Citizen Advisory Committee. We had a large group meeting back in February with the full committee where each of them had broken into groups and presented different concepts and ideas. You know, just kind of sketch level details and ideas for what they wanted to see on the site. Based on what they had heard in the town hall meetings and things that they felt were priorities. And then using those ideas that were presented, the project consulting team, M G B and A, and the various sub consultants. Generated the kind of rough concepts that are in your packet that I'll stroll through here in a minute. And part of that was to also at the same time generate some some baseline economic, you know, some market analysis information on what would the economic cost and benefit of these various concepts be to start to work towards going from a concept level master plan with ideas and, you know, general uses to an actual plan that, you know, that we know generally how much it would cost to develop and grade. You know, how much the infrastructure would be and, and the kind of uses that we need to make that project successful. So that's the process we're in right now is taking the five, you know, general concepts that were in your packet. Those were presented in small group working meetings with, you know, two and three members of the advisory committee at a time. One week and we got some, some really good feedback and input from them on those. We're now in the process of refining those even further to, you know, a more professional looking site plan. That's even further refined with, you know, unit counts and, and dimensions and grading details and renderings and things like that. But a really key part of this is the cost of this development and the market feasibility of this development. We want to make sure this town center is successful. And there is a, you know, an economic reality. We're not driven by making a profit on this project, obviously, but we do need to be mindful of creating a concept that is economically sustainable, but for the businesses that we want to see and we want to thrive there, but also to, you know, to make sure we're finding the right balance between, you know, responding to the concerns over, you know, development intensity and building heights and things like that that we've heard. With creating a project that can help recoup the city's investment on the, the purchase of the land and again, be viable over time. So, given that context, here's some preliminary information in the background section of the memo. Where this is now without showing, you know, even a refined development plan. Based on market conditions right now for, you know, different types of uses and town center development projects. The development sub consulting team that are part of our contracted project team. Estimate that, that about, you know, in the ballpark of a hundred and fifty to two hundred residential units. Would start to approach a project that can pencil. And this is kind of setting aside for a minute any financial tool. So this is just an open market project, just for a second, to, to try to balance, you know, preserving open space and plazas and, and community space and gathering areas. With structured parking and a good mix of residential to commercial and generating the kind of activity and people on the site that you need to make these projects successful. They estimated about a hundred fifty to two hundred units, you know, really start to approach that. What was interesting to learn is that, you know, this kind of development pattern we've seen all over the place of of market rate apartment units is not as feasible now. The market on that has changed really drastically in the last two years. So the, the residential model here would be, at least in this conceptual state condominiums, so, so for sale units. Either all or a large majority of those units being for sale condominium type product. Most of them are also a mixed use type development where you have retail and commercial on, on the ground floor to activate streets and, and create that town center. That, that sense of place that, that is important with, with units above that. How these units are masked and how they're designed, you know, is still being worked on is up in the air, but, but, you know, there's been very clear feedback. Dating back to before the city owned it, that a big massive building is not what the community wants there. So that's not the direction that was going. So, and what that also looks like is likely, you know, just based on the size of the property and retaining open space and fitting in public parking and roadways and all these different things, you know, building massing in the two to three story ballpark, depending on how many buildings there are and how the site's laid out. Excuse me. From a market feasibility standpoint, they estimated the site can, can handle, you know, thirty to forty thousand square feet of retail commercial space. That, you know, there's probably be about a hundred thousand square feet in the, in the hillside plaza buildings today, but obviously the vision here is not for big box, you know, commercial tenants like you see down there, like the Ream store or places like that, but rather smaller, you know, restaurants, boutique shops, that, that's a lot of the public feedback we've heard. So the building footprints are smaller, but, but forty thousand square feet. It's again, an estimate. It's not to say it has to. Correct, yeah.
For commercial.
For the commercial element of, of the site.
That's much smaller.
I thought that we were looking at a revenue meat dollar, but revenue positive. When you said we're not really looking to get money, we certainly can't lose it.
Well, then that, that's where we have to.
So, this is a point that I was going to stop him and make, but this is if, so what this consultant is saying is if, if, if we keep our two acres and we're, and a developer is going to come in and try to make this site viable, they're saying that's what they need. Okay, so that is one hundred percent different than some of the ideas that I have to, that are going to make it more. That I'm gonna, that I think development can, can make money in without some of the things that we haven't brought up yet. Anyway, I know that's.
Yeah, no, that's correct, but, but I don't want to take a step further in developing a town center that's not economically viable until we've had a discussion of what tools are out there to know what tools are on the table for us to use. And then a, a big, a big cost of any development like this, but a critical piece of any successful development like this is public parking, consolidated parking. So we're not using horizontal acreage of the site as surface parking lots. Surface parking lots are cheap, they're easy to build, they're, you know, that's, that's the, the easy approach. But in a town center, it really has to be structured, you know, and, and accessible, but, but not the forefront of, of the whole development. And structured parking, it's, it's the equation to all of these town center developments. And I've talked to even today, you know, staff at Midville and, and other town centers in the area. And it's always, how do you figure out the parking equation? When this project was purchased, the, the C D R A created a project area to be able to purchase the property. We have not engaged in taxing entities yet on creating a, a tax increment financing revenue flow, which would require negotiation with the taxing entities that, that serve the city. Typically would require some project economics and, and some quantitative, you know, numbers and data that, that we intended to go back with once we had a site plan kind of taking shape. So where we are right now is in this critical piece of, of refining concepts and, and public ideas and general site plans that you see in the package. Into a site that works, that achieves the city's vision, that achieves the city's goal, but that also acknowledges the, the fact that the city did purchase this property and you know, presumably wants to recoup its investment out of this, you know, in some way. So that's kind of why we're, we're bringing this to you tonight. And I'll quickly scroll through. You know, some of the documents here, but these were all in your packets. You can read these. I won't spend too much time on them. This town square requirements sheet was, was drafted by the, the chair of the citizen advisor committee and sent out to the project team. And kind of summarizes some of the feedback that the project team heard when we presented these, these different concepts. Of, of what the theme should be and, you know, preservation of views and, and making this, you know, really a, a town center that, you know, that people will want to spend time in.
Can I ask, I want to.
Please, yeah.
Comment this. To me, this is a, I mean, this is high in the sky. This would be lovely if we could do all of this. When it says requirements. I read through this and I think there's probably like we're talking in other realms. There's negotiables and non-negotiables in this list. But how do you feel about when it says requirements? Do you, are you trying to check the box with every single one of these?
I think what we're trying to do is, is, is walk this, this pretty thin line of, you know, we, we have heard just and this won't surprise the council of we want to limit density, we want to limit building height. We want to maximize open space. You know, we want this site to be all these things, but we don't want it to be too much. And when you start to look at that in the context of developing a viable town center site and factoring in economics, that becomes kind of a tight rope to walk. And that's where we need some council direction on how much leeway we have to get creative in this approach. So, so we are trying to, as much as we can to invoke all of these things because these, these typically are going to represent a, a lot of the public feedback we've heard. Not just from the advisory committee, but in town hall meetings as well.
This is, I guess, kind of a structural question since we've been out of the loop here for some time on, on, on this citizen envisioning committee, but I'm trying to understand why the citizen envisioning committee is not represented at our discussion tonight. I, I mean, I appreciate that the staff is representing, but I've voiced this concern over the course of the last year. I think that this should be, you know, I, I don't understand why we don't have a representative from the citizen advisory, uh, citizen envisioning committee at our table.
Randy's here.
What I would say.
Not at the table. He's not part of the conversation.
What I would say is this is context leading into a financial discussion where we need direction from the councils that we can take back to the advisory committee and say, these tools are on the table, these are not. They're, they're additional, it's additional direction that we can apply to our site planning process.
I would, I would just say that citizen vision committee does not have the fiduciary responsibility we do.
And I think. I am not, I am not deferring our fiduciary responsibility to the citizen committee. But I think that their direct engagement with us is why we formed the citizen committees. So I, I struggle with this.
So my answer to the, that is you're going to have many of those opportunities coming up. We need additional direction from you. To be able to give to the committee. So that's the context here. We, you, you are going to have the opportunity for that, but we need this direction to take back to the committee before they can finalize things to come back to you.
So, Mike, anything else on your end?
Yes, so I want to share, I, I will leave the concepts just for you to review on your own. And I do want to switch over quickly to some common financial tools that, that are available to a city that will require legislative direction to put on the table. And, and really our, our project committee needs this direction, not, not, we don't need to know, you know, do this, don't do this, you know. But, but we need general direction on, should we explore some of these avenues to help bridge any gaps in the development costs and implementing the vision we want with, you know, with the economic impact that, that the city's already invested in this and, and the ability to recoup the city's purchase price and develop the land and face this in the way it wants to and deal with some of those financial hazards. Because right now to, to develop a successful town center. To, to get creative with structured parking and site grading and do all of these things and, and limit density and maximize open space. There is going to be a cost gap that, that couldn't be realized on the, on the, the private development market. And I think that's, that's, we acknowledge that and that's okay, but we just need to know, you know, what the council's comfort level is in exploring.
One of the things I've said before, and I think we, as a council, need to discuss is do we really need to go with the same ratios of parking spaces to commercial space that we've been doing historically? You know, we need to reevaluate that. You know, we, we see oceans and oceans of unused parking stalls. And I think that this project is supposed to be coming into the twenty-first century of, of really thinking this through in a different way than we have over the last many decades.
And the answer is no, we are, we are preparing a, a more form-based code style of parking where you're sharing parking between uses. Not every single use has, has to have its five stalls per thousand and exist in the vacuum. It's consolidated structured parking, but, but the minute you go from surface parking and put it in a structure. The cost goes way up and, and it becomes an equation that needs to be figured out.
And I would just say, I don't think that my family could ever go here if we couldn't park. So I just want to, we got to balance that.
And then that's a little off topic. Let's.
Yeah, so, so here's some tools. This was sent out to you. These were provided by Zion's Bank Public Finance. We asked them, hey, what tools do cities commonly use in these town center projects? And they put these together just as an objective list of things that we can explore. Pursuing some of these will preclude us from pursuing others. Some of them will, you know, they have benefits and drawbacks that we'd have to work through. The first two are brand new, just adopted by the legislature this past year. We've got the first home investment zone and then hops, which I, I can't remember, home opportunity, something zone.
Pardon me, but where, where is that document?
That was emailed to you because I just received that after the packet was out. So that got emailed out yesterday, I guess.
Unless we printed it, we don't have it at hand.
I've, I've got one for you. You can have mine. I've, I've got one right there. So the first home investment zone is meant for, it's a tax increment financing tool. That doesn't, it requires committee approval, but not negotiation of taxing entities. It allows a tax increment financing rate of sixty percent in a project area, but it does have minimums in terms of number of units provided and, and the tax increment goes towards helping the construction of owner occupied housing within a project.
So that's not going to work on this property. So let's move forward.
Well, it is meant for town centers and there is a residential component of this.
Yeah, this, but this, this specific, I mean, this, this actually is something that I'm really interested in for some other areas, but this one hundred percent will not work at that hillside.
What I really want to stress here is, is some of the housing in a, in a first home investment zone, it, it doesn't all have to be built within one project. It can be spread out. So not all of the housing would need to be implemented in this site. The benefits is you, you don't have to negotiate with taxing entities. You can trigger sixty percent tip.
You can, okay, so that actually brings back. So then I jumped the gun. Because there, there's some area that's, when you say it doesn't have to be on the property, how close does it have to be?
That I don't know, but we have the project area. That's like.
You just created a project area.
Probably the redevelopment area, the, the C R A area that we have would, would probably work for that. If you pursue this, you preclude yourself from pursuing taxing financing through a conventional C R A. Okay, the hops zone, it, you have to be ten acres or less. And, and so I do not think that one's eligible here because the site is just over ten acres. Then your, your traditional C R A, which is negotiation with taxing entities, which admittedly has become a lot more challenging recently with the county, with the school district. You know, the participation rates conventionally in the past have been, you know, in the seventy, seventy-five percent. Sixty percent is kind of where they cut off now. So there are challenges with this.
And the retail.
And, and the retail element, yeah.
Retail, the lack of the ability to use tax increment from retail, which the state legislature changed a couple of years ago.
So this, this can be successful. You know, there is only a certain amount of gap though, that it's likely to be able to bridge. What these commonly pay for is infrastructure. This could help with parking. It helps with some of the community space and, and certainly the development of some of the housing that will be included in the site.
Now you're on hops.
No, I, I skipped past hops because that caps at a, a ten acres or less and this site is over ten acres.
There's a weird cutoff.
Well, I.
C R A at the bottom of the, of the first page and that's spilled into this. This is. C R A.
Well, I, you know, again, I think, I think to have received this yesterday for such an important conversation today.
We, we received it from our consultants.
I don't care. I think this should be postponed to when we've had a chance to study this and give this thoughtful consideration.
So let's keep going, Mike.
Okay, other tools, public infrastructure district. This, the, the gravel pit, you'll remember approached us about this. Probably before Councilmember Highland was on the council about using this to finance infrastructure within a site. This is basically where a tax, a mill rate is assessed within a development area to the property owners within that area who have to agree to that. And then that that area gets bonding authority can use that to pay for public infrastructure. The, the city would need to likely sell the, the portions of the property where this is applied. I don't know that it's seen to be used though. But that can fund, that can provide upfront funding for infrastructure with the disadvantage of it, it increases the, the tax rate for that project. Similarly, there's a special assessment area where you could establish a, a special assessment area and, and impose additional taxing within that area. Again, largely a lot of these tools help with infrastructure costs, which, which is critical. Structured parking is public infrastructure here. And then we get to some other, you know, slightly different options that, that are, are interesting to consider. Ground lease of the property where the city maintains ownership of the land, but, but leases that land at an annual rate. And then, you know, the city could pay down its purchase price over time through ground leases. The developer does not then have the, the, the land cost to, to factor in. You know, there's again advantages and disadvantages to all of these. The equity investment in development of property where the city contributes property and then, and then becomes an investor in that and gets a certain yield based on the value that that property generates over time. You know, sale of property and then bonding. Many different types. There's, there's sales tax bonding, general obligation bonding, which requires the public vote, you know, other types there. Again, largely used to fund infrastructure. Advantages are there, this is a lower, lower rates available for this financing than developers would get typically. General obligation bonds have the lowest rates, but are also subject to voter approval. Then other private programs like the low income housing tax credit are available for, for housing implementation as well. So I, I want to reiterate that we are at this phase of the project, we're trying to develop a site plan that the public can be supportive. While not turning a, a, a blind eye to the, the economic reality of developing the site. These tools are, are used and proven to be successful in, in different types of town center projects all over the place and where, you know, where the city does have full control of this development. You know, we would recommend considering, you know, at least the exploration of some of these to help with any financing gaps. So it's not just a, you know, a complete market rate unit, but that is a council decision. And that's kind of the feedback we want is is this on the table? Is this not? If it is, what we would do is probably continue pursuing development of a site plan that it, that typically could could pencil. And then maybe developing an alternate site plan, utilizing some of these financial tools to kind of help illustrate what you could get without the tools, what you can get with the tools.
Perfect. So, so let's make sure that the table's set how, how I want to have this discussion go. So one of the things that Mike talked about in the beginning was some of the, you know, for, for, if we were to keep our little portion and sell this off to development, they would need certain things to make this pencil. You know, a hundred fifty to two hundred housing units. That's not what we want. We know that's not what the community wants. In my mind, pick these around the number that, that it would be okay on this site. So we're going to have to do some things to offset that. So one of the things that he's talked about is tip. Tip is a great tool to help a developer pay back over time, the ability to create a, you know, parking. Which is one of the things that we all think is one of the most important aspects of this site. So, so, so the options to create a TIF area that where all of the taxing entities collect less taxes, they collect the same amount of taxes, but don't keep it and, and then contribute it back to help offset the cost to create what we want to create. So there's something that we can do. And, and he also talked about the bonding. We, we all know what, you know, what bonding is, how we, you know, we've done bonding projects before. So what I want to then lead into this discussion is the specifics of, I've had staff look at the potential of doing a twenty-five million dollar Geo bond. Okay, so a Geo bond is a general obligation bond that, that, uh, would go on the ballot in November for our citizens to vote on. Uh, one of the reasons we chose twenty-five million specifically is that would allow us to pay off our current thirteen million dollar bond that we have, that we have sales tax pledged to. A million dollar payment would go away. Okay, along with that, I, Michael has always been, and, and after talking with development, potential development partners. They love the thought process of land leasing. So if we were then to land lease everything but the public purpose part. I'm positive we could generate one to one and a half million dollars in revenue a, a, a year. So all of a sudden we would have improved our current financial situation about two and a half million dollars, two to two and a half million dollars a year. Okay, so.
Is that, sorry, keep going.
So a, as far as helping development, be able to create something that we want. I foresee with that twenty-five million dollars being able to help get the property, the entire property that we currently don't have now, the entire area, should I say that, that way? Does that make sense? Or do I need to spell it out?
No, it makes sense.
Okay, it would help us with some leases that we currently have that we have to work through. And it would help us to, to actually get the entire town center area into a place where, where it's moving forward.
So with a general election obligation bond. That's then an increase in property tax.
It's not property tax. Well, it, it's collected through property tax, but it's a, it's a, I guess, is it considered a property tax? Okay, but it's a property tax that would be voted on by, by, by property owner, by.
A simple majority.
But it drops off.
After twenty.
Once it's paid.
Correct.
Just like a school bond.
So that, that's the difference. Yep, it, it would drop off. So twenty-five million dollars would be. So twenty-five million dollars would be basically an eight to nine dollar amount of payment for our residents.
So of all these options, those are the ones that you recommend.
So that's how, that's how I foresee us doing what the residents have asked. They they've they've wanted a walkable property, they've wanted um to be, so hiding parking. So whether it's underground or structured parking lots or buildings, um, we would be able to, with the tax increment, help development do that. Um, we would be able to get to a point where we can do what we want with a public purpose and all of the development that goes into that with those monies. And then to help continue to, uh, you know, land lease and find development partners to build structures that we feel comfortable with as a council, and that the 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 that the that the um consultant, or not the consultant, the uh, um the committee feels, the advisory committee feels comfortable with.
So then would you describe this as a public-private partnership if we go into the business of leasing land?
Correct, I think the tax increment aspect would be pu- pu- public-private, along with, you know, holding the land would also be considered public private.
And how does that factor, um, and I realize I don't mean to get this maybe premature, but, you know, with the brick and mortar, retail sales challenges of the trending, are we talking that it would be revenue from restaurants, I mean, if we're not going down the path, if we're gonna limit down to a hundred or fifty, as few as fifty uh, housing units, then what types of businesses, do you have any conceptual idea of what you're foreseeing in terms of types of businesses that would lease the land?
Um, yes, I I mean, I think I think it needs to be driven by sales tax, so I think I think you're looking at less commercial and more retail, which is, which is restaurants, shops, um.
And do you foresee that there would be maybe some mix, one, two, or three large developers who would lease from us, and then you could say sublet to the types of businesses that they, is that, is that the conceptual?
That's, yeah, that's a a good question, and that's kinda what a a developer, at least from the work that I've seen, developers will come in and then they will do the the leasing and really work on the market elements of getting what's there. I think the key to all of this is, once you select a private developer and then how you shape the development agreement for what you're doing with the lease, what you're doing with the contribution of tax increment, and the long-term elements that they have, that's gonna be a key part.
That would be using form-based code to help the develop, or what it.
Yes, I mean, we would establish a site plan, a preferred site plan, and then that likely would go in the development agreement of here's the site plan, if you wanna vary this, here's a process or something like that, I think we would.
Would it be using the form-based code overlay or?
Kind of, we we are developing, I mean, we're, we own the property, so we're developing the site in a way that that the city wants to see, but we are using form-based code principles to generate that site plan, be uh acknowledging the way we organize the buildings and the massing and the form is is going to last a lot longer than, you know, than businesses that that come and go from you know, the development, so, so we're using form-based code principles to develop the site, it will be compliant with our form-based code, but we're we're also in full control of what it looks like.
Yeah, and that's the key point, the the difference here is you own this land.
Yeah.
You're gonna shape exactly what you want, if you didn't own the land, form-based code would be the only way to shape how you all look at it.
So, one of the things that I wanted to to end with budgetarily is one, for me, one of the reasons that this is really attractive is um, we would be changing our financial outlook as it is today by almost two and a half million dollars a year, which asking, looking at Scott, would make a drastic difference. So, sorry, well, so eh then it would take, it would take the million dollar payment off our books, and then we're looking at a million to a million and a half in revenue from land leases. So so in reality, we could change our financial outlook between two to two and a half million dollars a year by doing this, which would push off a potential property tax increase.
Question for you, if we do a general obligation bond, could you, is it possible to pay back? We got some money.
It's a really good question, I've I've.
Because I love to see if it's possible even give us the option, I'll say, of having no housing.
So one of the things, one of the reasons that I I've thought about that, that but one of the things that if we didn't, we would have the ability with the money that we didn't pay back to affect the entire town center in our general plan area to start, you know.
I get that.
Does that make sense?
There's a place making concept where where some level of I'm not saying the number, but some level of people living and and, you know, being on the site daily actually greatly contributes to the viability of of a successful town center. So we can go down that road, it does change the the potentially the types of tenants and especially your your smaller retailers might struggle more if there's no housing at all, but.
Well, and I I guess, you know, when I think about, you know, places around Salt Lake, like uh what's coming to mind is in Sandy, the, um place near the real South Town, might, no, not South Town, um, it's where the um theaters are, somebody help me here. On the north side of the convention center, thank you, the Jordan Commons. So the last time I was there and I walked from where I parked, uh, granted, it was winter time, but I I came from parking um to the southeast and I walked down the road that tees into where the theaters are, and there were these gigantic restaurants on either side of me that were just kind of sitting empty. And I ge- I guess what I I am concerned about the city holding the bag on possibly is depending on the length of leases that we might enter into with one, two, or three developmental companies. Should they build infrastructure based on, you know, kind of a a few ginormous restaurants or some kind of concept that just really doesn't turn out to be successful? And then they either get out of their lease or whatever, and then we're left with property where the infrastructure that's been built is gonna require quite a bit of money should another uh development company, you know, come in to take over the lease, I mean, uh, cause, cause one of the things that I thought we were gonna entertain in this, um uh town center was the idea that, you know, numerous small businesses you know, working to to keep it vibrant, um might might be a successful model, and I I just don't, I'm I'm trying to understand if that would go away by having these, and I know we don't have a crystal ball, but I'm trying to think what kind of development companies are gonna see a a real return on their investment related to the restaurant and retail, uh, which tends to have a lower margin of profit than than other businesses.
I like the holiday example better because there's some flex space where it could be commercial, like there's an interior design place there in Holiday, or right next to a restaurant, right next to an aesthetics place, so the flex space actually gave them, I think, a better chance survival.
By by and large, the public feedback we've gotten is small, commercial, you know, local retailers, that that kind of feel, because those do contribute positively to a town center. Um, so we'd have to go down that road of exploring if if some of these options are are we kinda get the go ahead on it, then we can explore how does this impact the viability of a a small business to thrive in in this town center, but the key is still keeping that town center essence, these tools will certainly help in you potentially eas- easing some of the burden of of making this all about the numbers, which is not what we wanna do, but is something, you know.
Well, but and I wanna just underscore what what Mike Johnson has said here about looking at housing units in a negative way. Um, you know, we look at, you know, favorite place like the um city center mall downtown, and and they have all that density of of condominiums and apartments all around it, and and it has no uh, housing in it, and it it lives because of this extreme population all around it. And because Cotwood Heights is predominantly S one and with a little bit of density, I I am concerned that we need some housing density, maybe, maybe it's only a hundred units, but um, I, you know, this small business is thriving when all they have is people that are that have to drive or try to get there, and I, I, anyway, I I know we're trying to just strictly talk about funding, but I think that it's integral to our conversation to you know, have a sense of of how how can this um pencil out for the the people who end up with the space ultimately, you know, to make their, crack their nut.
The 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 number of house units would be in uh development agreements that we would sign. Uh, the, uh, as far as, you know, the the, we would need to land lease probably minimum fifty-year terms. As somebody who put the investment into, you know, the building wouldn't, you know, you you, you know, they they would maybe sell, but they would never walk away, you know, if they did, it would be, you know, just ours, I mean, you know, would and and a bank would come and take it and foregoes it and sell it to somebody else, so i- if something didn't work, so there wouldn't be any any risk to the city, the lease would still need to be paid and and, uh. So thoughts on what we just discussed, I I would love for this to be communicated to the the consultant, that that's the direction that we want to move forward with. If we were to put a a geo bond on the ballot, you know, um in reality, we don't have that much time, we have, uh, you know, I think the process from stats end is ninety days. And and that's October, September, and August, so, you know, we have June and July to basically if get something ready to sell to the public. Right, anything I'm missing?
I I I would request consensus if if we go down the road of preparing a concept assuming a general obligation one, because that is a purely a a political decision. But but we can generate concepts in that timeline for sure, i- if that's on the table and that's something that we should explore.
So so Mayor, you, the the items I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're advocating is looking at the general obligation bond, tax increment financing and land lease as the three main tools.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
I'm one hundred percent on board with land lease because it just makes sense, then we're not the ones that are trying to manage the day-to-day, even if we outsource that to a property management company that just takes on too much risk. We like that idea. And I like the idea of giving the voters the opportunity to to have a say, because what we're seeing is people in District Three honestly are really excited about this, I'm having a hard time getting people really excited about this in my district, and so because it's a citywide obligation, I think our citizens should.
I've always been in favor of the ground lease option.
I concur with my council members here, well said.
So so always the only thing that we're concurring on is moving forward with the concept
No, for sure.
Land le- of land leasing to development, TIF, uh, pursuing TIF financing to help offset costs and uh to to put forward to the voters a geo, the opportunity to 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 approve a geo bond.
Yes, uh, I I agree with Council, what Councilwoman Highland said, I I, this is not a topic of discussion in District One. Uh, that being said, um, I would support putting it on the ballot and seeing if people wanna get behind that effort. Let them speak, I'm I'm for that, so.
And I don't understand TIP enough to say your name on us, so. That's the tool.
Public-private partnership.
Yeah, with with TIP though, un- unless you are bonding within the project, the risk really is not as high for you as long as you can get the contribution. Because it's all based on tax increment, which is the increase in value that will generate the funds for that, so there isn't a huge amount of risk unless you're bonding.
TIP is specifically going to help us, help the developer. Yes, to to be able to create what we want to help them create. That that's what it's for.
The one thing that is gonna be, that'll be interesting in the models, and I'll just say this real quickly, tax financing without the retail being generated towards this, there has to be in some element of density if you're gonna get any TIP to make anything happen there, and that's that's one of the balances that will have to be looked at with what type of projects you go forward with.
I know this is a big deal in Sean's district, and I just can't wait to see his smile on his face when it's done.
That's something that has been discussed for a long time, and then, you know, one of the things that I think is gonna be a huge benefit, um not just for the city, or just for the city and the residents, is um keeping the residents here to be entertained, and keeping them here to spend their tax dollars and not entering off to Sandy. If they, or you know, it's it's gonna be a big.
That's what I've always said.
I agree, and then to Suzanne and Matt's point, I would defer to Randy to who, when he created um, the the hillside groups that he did, they came from the entire city. You know, hi- his email list ended up with people all over the, from every district, from everywhere, and so I know, I know that it's maybe more.
Every pocket's got their little issue, right? This is a, this is a cool thing.
I do, I do think that the the end vision for the entire city could be really, really awesome.
That's why I like publicizing it and geo bonds, because we'll start to know.
Yeah, I do, the one thing that I would take back, Mike, is we need something on paper to sell sooner than later. It feels like it's dragged on and I'm ready to to see something to to get people people excited about. So, is that okay with everybody?
Sounds good to me. Appreciate the direction, thank you.
For that discussion, and I will.
Motion to close the CRA meeting.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.